Being at town hall, we must maintain decorum and we must also listen attentively because of the media coverage. Then apart from this, we're going to take questions after the presentations and he's going to respond to the questions in few minutes. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to listen to Presidential Aspirant Label Party.
Please be seated. I was there. I was listening to my, I was listening to my brother and he said, he's going to introduce me. So I said, what again? You want to introduce, you've called my name. Let me start by respectfully recognizing our Vice Chancellor, the Dean, and the Director, the Vice Presidential Candidate, Chairman of our party, and all the dignitaries are gathered here, especially most important students. My Dean is a gratitude. I sincerely thank the university and the faculty and the director for this opportunity for interaction. This year have said all that needs to be said. So for me, would have been to go straight into the, us doing the interaction by asking questions, because when you go to university, it's not just for them to ask questions, it's all for, for you to learn, because the most important ingredients of leadership is listening and learning. When I was driving here, when I was driving here this morning, I told Aisha, who was in the car with me, I said, Aisha, let me tell you the greatest thing that happened to me in terms of education, that whenever I go to a secondary school, I ask the principal and all the teachers to leave, I want to talk with the students, that it was the students who told me what I did, I will move on to assist to number one, not their choice. So for me, I want to learn is about their future. But it's important that before we go into that discussion, we need to know where our country is today, because unless you know where you are, that's where you from their vision, where you want to go. If you don't know where you are, you don't know where you're going, every road will lead you there. It becomes Confucian. You now live in a country that can't be classified as a fair state, because they admit the two major ingredients of a fair state. When you are no longer in control of, number one is when you are no longer in control of your territory. Nigeria have today insecurity that is threatening the existence of the country. No place in Nigeria today is secure. That is affecting every community. It is from banditry to kidnapping, from everything that you can imagine, and we seem to have lost control of it. We have an economic crisis with a debt that everybody, every analyst, every institution have said Nigeria is reaching the worst in terms of its debts. Yesterday, I discussed the debt in Bauchi, and I said to them, this city of Bauchi is where we had a leader, Tafa Balaawa, a revolting leader that was in 1964, June 17, 1964, applied to the World Bank for the first time for Nigeria to borrow money, to borrow eighty-two million dollars to build the Khainji Dam to generate seven hundred and fifty megawatts of electricity. In that letter to the World Bank President, he said, "We want to change the economy of our country, so this electricity will help us." 1964, that was the first time Nigeria borrowed money. And the World Bank replied, congratulated him for that vision and gave him that money, that is why Khainji Dam was built. Fifty-nine years after, that money which he borrowed in 1964, today is worth about 1.2, 1.3 billion naira, dollars. 1.2, 1.3 billion dollars. Today, five, nine years after, we can still talk about Khainji Dam. But Nigeria today is owing, in naira, if we put the words and means to our debt, about seventy-seven trillion, and if you convert it by four hundred and ten naira, you have about one hundred eighty-seven billion dollars, which is equivalent to one hundred and fifty Khainjadas. Where are the Khainjadas? (Applause) Please again! We borrowed money, we borrowed money and wasted it. That is the problem we're facing today, because if we have been able to borrow and generate seven hundred and fifty, it would have been different. Nigeria today is facing a crisis of corruption, crisis in oil theft and everything, or proportion. Your university was closed for eight months in a country where the average tertiary intake is nine percent, when the global average is at eight percent. We're nine percent, and it was shut down, and the reason why it was shut down, because there was an agreement in 2009, where the Federal Government of Nigeria signed and agreed that they will pay between 1.3 trillion, 1.3 trillion, and they paid 200, and in subsequent ten years, they could not pay anything, and they're still a country. The same country, in oil theft in one month would have paid that. We're the only open country that is not supplying our quota, except from Venezuela because of this. In July, it even was in August, in July 2022, our open quota is 1.8 million barrel per day, in July 2022. Our average production was 1,083,000. Every day, we lost 717,000, which for thirty-one days was 222,227 barrels. That's what we lost in July. If we have done that and sold it, July last year was the highest price of oil, 110 dollars. That would have given us, if we use that 110 to multiply out to 22,227, we would have had 2,445 million dollars, which if you multiply by 650, will give you 1.4 trillion, and we were closer in the basis because of 1.1 trillion. So in one month, we would have been able to solve that by giving them 1.1 trillion and use the remaining 300 trillion to complete the project of Abuja Tokano. One month. I didn't say two months, one month. That is the worst you see in this country. You have an inflation today that is intolerable because of your fiscal rascality. So we have a problem. Your economy, there's no economy that I know today, Nigeria have 33%, 40% unemployment. You have nearly 55% youth unemployment, your youth in their productive age are doing nothing. You have a crisis. What will happen when they reach that time and age? The country is finished, because in their productive age, they're not doing anything. No country in the world of our size have that level of unemployment without declaring Today, we are classified as a high country with the highest number of people in multi-dimensional poverty. 133 million people. We have more people living in poverty than India, India is 1.4 billion people. In fact, we have more people living in poverty than India and China combined. These two countries combined is 2.8 billion, and we're just about 200 million, but we have more people living in poverty than two of them combined. You have over 20 million out of school children, mainly girls in the north. So the crisis is something, where today the drug prevalence in globally is about 5.8%. Nigerian drug prevalence among our youth are over 14%, more than twice the average. Because they have nothing to do, you're driving them into drugs and everything, and that is cumulative effect of what we are facing, that you call crisis of banditry today, is cumulative effect of leadership failure over the years that refused to do the right thing. And I and my brother Dati have sat down and said, "We can solve this, that a new Nigeria is possible." What are we going to do to do that in a Nigeria? And I want to bore you with crisis, because I can speak about crisis of Nigeria for the whole of today, but starting what is the difference between poor and rich nation? Is amplified in human development index. Simply health, education, and per capita. If you fix the three items, you pull your country out of difficulty. So education is at the heart of this. So what you need to do to see the failure of your country, when you talk about health, you talk about life expectancy, while the global average is about 72, 73, you are about 55, so you are truly about 20 years short of where the world is. In education, a human capita, we are 168 over 173 globally. So you failed, per capita, you're just producing poverty. The only thing, number one, is I will secure and unite the country. The foundation on which you're going to build a new country is to secure the country, without which you can't do any other thing. People must be secured. And then nobody make you believe that the enemy or the criminal is more formidable. It is not. What is lacking in leadership? What is lacking is to have a governance structure, security governance structure that addresses the problem. And that will only come with leadership. That is, I said, we would deal with that issue decisively. That's it to anybody who cares. We're not going to give you excuse, we want you to hold us responsible. It's consumption that we're dead, we'll deal with it. We would discuss with those who are winnable and those who are not, we'll deal with them. They must, one person is in charge, we can't share it with any others. Simultaneously as we are doing this, you must start, because everything you need to do must be turned up. You must start pulling people out of poverty. The only way to do this is to remove your country today from consumption to production. Nigeria is not producing anything. It is a country that wasted everybody's time on sharing, and we want to remove the sharing formula and replace it with production formula. We will tackle this country's production based on our factor endurance. I was yesterday in Bauchi State, if you look at my campaign, and I told the people of Bauchi State, "You are today waiting for the money to be shared from Abuja, it will soon stop." Because Bauchi State is actually bigger than two countries. Bauchi State is bigger than Belgium and Gambia combined. Bauchi State, Bauchi State is 45.8 thousand square kilometers of land. Belgium is at 9, 30.9, and Gambia is 10.8. If you plus these two, Bauchi State is more, and they have less population, so they have more land for famine, but they can't feed themselves. When these two countries can feed themselves and everything, we have to stop it. Out of the ten poorest states in Nigeria, nine is in the north. And that nine is a state that can feed Nigeria, states that can make Nigeria a great nation, because Nigeria can earn more from agriculture, I said every day, far more than it earns from oil. God has blessed us with land, but we can't even feed ourselves. India can feed itself. India is 1.4 billion people, living on 3.2 million square kilometers of land. Nigeria lives on one-third of Indian land. We are living on 923,000 square kilometers, when we have one-seventy of their population. But they can feed themselves and export, but we cannot feed ourselves. It's unacceptable. It cannot continue. And we have states that have endured to be able to feed themselves. Niger State is poor. Burundi State is poor. Taraba State is poor. These are our three biggest states. These states alone can feed themselves, feed Nigeria and export. Niger State earns for subsidiary allocation, by the time they reduce their debts most, in a year, the most they can get is about 50 billion naira. That's all they can get. And that's what they're running around, they don't want to do any other thing. When they are sitting on 76.3 thousand square kilometers of fertile land, eight of their local governments is under control of bandits, because they have no job, but they have 76.3 thousand square kilometers of fertile land that can change Nigeria and feed Nigeria. Netherlands have only, without water, 33,000 square kilometers of land, so Niger State is two and a half times the size of Netherlands. Netherlands last, in 2021, did agricultural export of 103 billion euros, 120 billion dollars. Niger State cannot feed itself, but they have two and a half times their land, they have winter, they have everything, but they did 120 billion export of agricultural produce, four times the entire Nigerian export. That's what they landed in there. If Niger State was able to do just 5% of that, it would be 6 billion dollars. At 650, 650, 700 that are rated is today, they will be able to have about 4 trillion, 80 times what they will earn for subsidiary allocation, but they won't do it, because they're waiting for money to be shared. We want to remove that sharing formula. Niger State can be a great country. The same thing is what you're going to see in all other places. Our problem today is Sambisa Forest. That is where we said we cannot, is a farmland. It's a place that can be polluted. The Sambisa area is 50,000 square kilometers, that is three times the size of Israel. Israel is 22.1, so if you times Israel by 366, they are 60. It's 10% minus or plus, and it's giving us problem. We can become a farmland. I and Dati and I have changed, we will change this country. It will not be the same again. We are not here to give promise, so we can use that. The same thing goes with Taraba. I just want to use this pretext to show you how great these countries. Same thing goes with Taraba. Taraba is 54.4 thousand square kilometers, that is bigger than Belgium and Israel combined. They can't feed themselves. Taraba is in fall of Mambila, where you can do tourism, where you can grow flour, where you can grow tea, where you can grow coffee. I was in Kenya and I saw young boys and girls picking flour. Kenya did export of over half a billion dollars of flour in 2021. Flour, it's not okay science in growing flour. We have enough young girls and boys that we will buy some during Valentine and everything so that we can sell it. So we have, but we're not growing that. They want to go to holidays, everybody is going to Kenya holidays. What did they see in Kenya? It is the mountain, it's a beautiful scenery. We have it in Taraba. And people can go there, but we can't go there. Taraba can grow coffee. Ethiopia did export of 1.1 billion dollars worth of coffee in 2021. Nigeria cannot. The total export of Nigeria, total export of Nigeria in 2021, including oil, is 18.9 trillion, converted by 650, which is the rate today, is under 30 billion dollars. For a country of 200 million people, living on 923,000 square kilometers. This you mentioned Malaysia. Malaysia lives on 329,000 square kilometers of land, 33 million population, their export in 2001 was over 250 billion dollars. So we couldn't do eight times what we did, is what Malaysia did. It's unacceptable. We will change this country. We must make it productive. What did Malaysia export, including the oil, palm oil, which they came here to learn? No. Vietnam came out of war few years ago. Vietnam export, Vietnam did some 331,000 square kilometers of land, 100 million population, half of our population, their export is over 350 billion. We couldn't do 10% of what they are doing. That's what I've added, we double their population, three times their land size, is unacceptable. I can go on and on, you have a great country, you have a great space, what you lack is leadership. This will have wasted everybody's time for a long time, and throwing your future, we're talking about your future, it's not about our future. It's your future, when you say people should go and talk in university. This year I was telling in your office, all the great men I met, I met them in university. I met them in university. When I passed through Oxford, Cambridge, Harvard and everything, I met great people come and talk to us as students. That's what we do is, we want to build a better future for you, it's not about us. Then we'll come and tell you, who is Mr. Obi? Well, so Obi doesn't have even structure, they don't know him. What structure do they have? Structure of criminality, corruption, throwing people into poverty, and causing misery for our people. We want to reverse that. That's what we want to do. We would dismantle, one of the, one of the channels that was interviewing me this month said establishment, a secret establishment. Is it corruption establishment? Or is it a corruption there? No. My dear people, we are not here to tell you anything, but to assure you that a new Nigeria is possible. And that new Nigeria will be led by a leader, a leader that understands what the problem is. This election that is coming must not be based on ethnicity. If you're from the north and anybody say vote for me because I'm from the north, tell him that the poorest people live in the north. They haven't solved it for years. Let us show you, the north is insecure. That's what you answer them, because you have voted north since. What did they do? The very people, they used, they used the controversies, the real people, they ride on their back to get there because of the first victim. The north is the poorest. South is the same thing, there's poor people everywhere, so please, it is not about ethnicity. You can't drive today from Abuja to Kaduna by air, by road, or by train, it's not because a non-Norderner is in government, enough of that. This year's election should not be by religion. There's no place Christians or Muslims buy bread cheaper. If you know the place, go and show me. If you have any mosque, if you know any mosque where they sell bread cheaper, show me. We'll go there and buy bread, and come out and worship. It is enough of that nonsense. Our problem is not religion. I've asked people like, "Vic, you have opportunity of traveling to Dubai." I'm a Christian, I'm a Catholic. The Catholic Church in Dubai, the land and the church was built by Emile of Dubai, is a Muslim. Let them stop telling us that nonsense. The central mosque in Donlan, the land cost billions, the land was donated by the Queen, it's not a Muslim. It's only in Nigeria, because they want to deceive us, because they have refused to educate our people, kept them impoverished, to tell them lies, tell them, "We will not follow you by religion." It is all by my turn, it's nobody's turn, it's your turn to take back your country. It is nobody's turn. My name, my name... My name is Mr. Peter Obi. I will tell you, I'm from the southeast, I'm an Igbo man, I am proud of where I come from, but I'm even more proud being a Nigerian, and I'm contesting the election. I don't want anybody to vote for me because of where I come from. I don't want anybody to do it for Dati. I'm contesting this election because I'm the most qualified to solve this problem. (Applause) Please, 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 play it again! We will. We will. Let me assure you. This year's election will be based, this year's election will be based on character we can trust. It's no longer stories. The first presidential candidate is here. And I'll tell you who is. His name is Dati Baba Ahmed. That is his name. You can go and Google it. When he wanted to introduce me, I said no introduction. Go and Google his name. You know his age, you know his name, you know the schools he went to. He had PhD in London School of, and London, she was of London. He read economics. That is the beginning. We must know those we are voting for. Their name, their age and everything and where they was school they went to must not be in secrecy. It must be open. I'm Mr. Peter Obi. If you look at here, I can show you. Let me tell you, I can show you people whom I went to school with. Vice Chancellor. Vice Chancellor, I know we are not in favor, time is out, but I need to mention something that happened to me. One of the greatest people that helped me in my government is here. Professor Ume. When I became, when I became governor, the Nigerian Medical Council, the Nigerian Medical Council refused. Nigerian Medical Council refused and said to me that the University of Annambra State University Medical School is shut down. And I asked why. They said to me, you have no teaching hospital. And you cannot have a medical school without a teaching hospital. He was the leader of that team. And I remember begging them in my office, you cannot punish the students because of the mistake of the government. We made the mistake, they will suffer. And I argued, can you allow me to build a teaching hospital in two years? All the panel members said, it will not be possible. Professor Ume said, why don't we give him two years? Go today. Go to, go to Annambra State University today. I built the fastest teaching hospital ever built in Nigeria in two years. So thank you for that. The Vice Chancellor and your team. This year's election will be based on competence. Character we can trust. So when I say, I'm Mr. Peter Obi. I went to Christ King College. I was in University of Nigeria Soka. I'm an alumna of Lagos Business School, an alumnus of Lagos Business School, alumnus of Oxford, alumnus of Cambridge, alumnus of So, and you can go there and Google it. If you Google Oxford today, you'll see it. So it is a very simple thing. We need people with a commitment. We need people with compassion. So we know what we're doing. Maybe because of honesty, because I want you to be interaction, I want you to ask questions. I heard when we're talking, they said if anybody do something that is wrong, we'll walk him out. We're not going to walk anybody out of here. You are free to tell me whatever you want. I want to learn from you because about your future. But let me assure you again. Don't allow us to continue the abuse of your country. Don't allow us to continue the abuse of your country. The society you abuse allowing us to abuse today and destroy today will take its revenge on you. God bless you.
All right, thank you, Your Excellency. Thank you, please, you may sit down, please. Uh, thank you for your presentation. All right, uh, with your permission, the Vice Chancellor, we're going into the second segment of this particular town hall meeting. Uh, we shall actually engage His Excellency Peter Obi. Uh, having some questions from members of the academic and intellectual environment, like two or three. Then we open the room for questions, you know, from the general audience. Burning questions, acceptable questions, please, based on the presentation he has already made. So I would like to invite including those that he did not make. All right, I would like to invite Professor Iro Iro Uke, a professor of public administration and policy analysis to actually raise his question about policy issues that affect our dear country and what will be the plans of His Excellency Peter Obi in this particular area.
Uh, standing on the protocol already established. I, I just have a little practical question that I want to ask our candidates. How are you going to give us electricity? No, you have, we have talked about theory. How are you going to give us electricity? How are you going to give us the steel rolling mill?
All right, uh, we're going to take two more.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Permit me to stand on existing protocol. My name is Dr. Tunde Akande, HOD Philosophy Department, University of Abuja.
So please, sorry, doctor, please introduce yourself proper, then you go ahead with the question.
My name is Dr. Tunde Akande. I'm the HOD of Philosophy Department, University of Abuja. Um, we have it as a popular maxim in philosophy that until philosophers become kings or kings become philosophers, nations will not know peace. A philosopher king is a leader who has mission ambition backed up with character competence and capacity to deliver. As a philosopher sir, His Excellency Mr. Peter Obi has been a practical demonstration of this popular philosophical axiom. He has demonstrated it as governor of Annambra State in his business life and in his personal life. The problem of Nigeria is largely a problem of bad thinking. For example, it is as a result of bad thinking that we have crude oil in abundance and we are unable to refine it locally. It is as a result of bad thinking that we have vast expanse of arable land, but we cannot have food security. It is as a result of bad thinking that we have so much sunshine, but cannot champion because of solar technology. We are therefore perishing because of lack of philosophy. Your Excellency sir, we want to say that we are proud of you as a philosopher. And to my fellow Nigerians, I want to use this medium to urge you all. Now that we have a chance to install a philosopher king and a philosopher statesman as our leader and the person of His Excellency Mr. Peter Obi, please do not let this golden opportunity slip by. Let us vote mission ambition backed up with character competence and capacity. Your Excellency sir, we look forward to hosting you as a philosopher president after May twenty ninth, two thousand and three, when by his grace, you must have been sworn in as the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. God bless His Excellency Mr. Peter Obi. God bless Abuja Leadership Center. God bless the Department of Philosophy in Abuja. God bless the University of Abuja. God bless the Federal
Thank you, the president in the making. God will make you. By all means, God will make you. From your speech this morning, we know that we don't deserve any other person apart from you as the president of this country. But sir, you know the problem of Nigeria is complex. And as you have just enumerated here, we have a lot of issues. It's like in abundance of water, the bull is thirsty. Sir, how do you assure us that when you get into this system, that you build the system in such a way that even when you leave, the system will still be functional? Because even we know you are going to repair the system. We are assured that you are going to repair the system. But the issue is not just repairing the system. The issue is after you have gone, by the grace of God, you'll be there. But after you, what happened next? So that we'll be like another, another country of the world. We are not the person entering matters, but how the system plays the role. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, His Excellency will respond to the questions. Then before we trade to the general audience, we invite you to make your questions, please.
Don't worry, we'll make sure you hear it very well. Even if you don't hear the question, I'll repeat it before I answer it. Professor Uke, let me thank you because you came from the policy side. Professor Uke, there's nothing difficult in power generation. There's nothing that Nigeria is going through that other nations haven't gone through. The three countries that have been able to double their capacity in power generation, the fastest growth Nigeria is the biggest economy in Africa. That's what we claim, giant of Africa. The giant of Africa generates between four to five thousand megawatts of electricity. Distribute them, that is a giant, with over two hundred million people. The second biggest economy is South Africa. South Africa is about sixty million people, but they generate nearly fifty thousand megawatts. You are two hundred thousand, two hundred million. You generate five to maybe about five thousand. And then somebody with fifty, generates about fifty. And in the past two months, South Africa declared war, what they called emergency power. Can Google it. I said they're not generating enough. That anybody can generate hundred megawatts without license. Somebody who is generating fifty, about fifty thousand, sixty million people have declared the emergency. Then you're generating five thousand, you're two hundred million, what will you do? Would declare war. If you read my manifesto, if you read my manifesto, you will see clear lines of what we want to do with issue of power. We've said by end of this year alone, we will ensure that we complete the power project with Siemens to ensure seven thousand generation, transmission and distribution. And we promise what we are going to do in twenty twenty four and what we are going to do in twenty twenty five is documented there. One thing I can tell you, that if there's anything Daddy and I discuss every day is that we can't afford to fail disciple. You can go and read, we shared it nearby here, not wasting anybody's time. On the rolling mill, I can tell you prof. When we want to deal with this show of internationalization, we're not giving a detailed position what we are going to do because we need a start advice. First is that we want government to pull out of any form of investment. Government is not a good manager. We want it to be, everything to be privatized, but not the type of provision that done in the past where we privatize profits and socialize losses. We will not deal with it the way it's going to be done. And everybody will see it in a transparent, regrettable manner. On issue of fuel, first is that people have asked this question. If we have the opportunity from day one, we'll remove subsidy. It's gone. People will tell you, oh, there will be crisis. Let me assure you, there will not be any crisis. First is that subsidy, as it is in Nigeria today, is organized crime. Nigeria is a country with about two hundred and two hundred and fifty million population. Pakistan is about the same population, two hundred, two hundred and fifty million. Pakistan have more roads than Nigeria. Yet their daily consumption of fuel is below fifty percent of Nigeria. We will remove subsidy. Besides, no country in the world refuses to invest money where it's supposed to invest money. The greatest investment any nation can do is education. The more you invest in education, the more developed you are. Everybody knows that. You can't talk about fiscal infrastructure without dealing with human infrastructure. But look at it now, your country, the national country between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-one, six years, the total budget in education is about three point six trillion. Can go and check, it's about three trillion, five hundred, it's about three point six trillion. The second most important thing a nation can do is health. In fact, if you follow Professor Angus Dutton, the Nobel Peace Prize winner in twenty fifteen, he said that the difference between rich and poor country is health and education. The second biggest thing you can do is health. Your budget for health is about two point three trillion for six years. These two combined is about six trillion. And your spending in budget for subsidy in one year is six point seven trillion. It's unacceptable. That is why your country is collapsing. We will remove it. We will support those who are going to do, those who are going to do, have refining facilities here. Dankotay is about to be completed. We have some other modular refineries. We are not even getting the crude oil. I say it every day, people don't wonder. They even have people that say they're doing it illegally. I will go to them and say, Oga, no more illegal. Come, let's do it illegal. Because I want you to produce for our people. Anybody, anywhere I can make it possible to be available, I'll do it. And I'll bring the price down. And I'll use the resources they used to steal to invest in education. To invest in health. If we have invented Nigeria and headed Nigeria, we would develop. So that is how we have fuel. On issue of bad thinking, proper thinking, thank you. Nigeria is not just bad thinking. It's bad thinking for stealing. We need dollar. I'm just giving an example. A country that needs every one dollar is not producing its quota. If you compare Nigeria and Angola, this year, because of the high oil price last year, and coal and inflation have come down, their rate of investment have gone down. Nigeria, Nigeria, you're not aware of that because you're not producing your water. I just give examples. Example, July, in August, our production was worse. Until I started shouting, it's coming up now. In August, our production was nine hundred and seventy-five. We are losing eight twenty-five every day. For thirty-one days, about twenty-five million barrels, which are hundred, hundred and ninety-two point five billion dollars. The money you need every day. So we'll deal with that. It's bad thinking and stealing. We'll stop the stealing. Prof, you asked about if I do it, whether I can be sustained. Profit can be sustained. When you talk about institution, what sustains institution anywhere in the world is the people. What sustains institution anywhere in the world is the people. If you go to Ghana today, Ghana, I'm not saying anywhere, and you're doing, you are doing, driving against the road where they say is one way, it is only for vehicle going this way, and you're going against it, Ghanaans will block you. They'll block you. A minister was just removed in Africa recently because, what did he do? Now, you, a minister was removed in Africa recently for corruption. What did he do? Because they found out that the minister suddenly built a new house in East Africa. In Nigeria, they vote Peter Obi in. He has no house in Abuja. Everybody knows he doesn't have a house in Abuja. Six months, he builds the biggest house in Abuja. Goes to his local church and says he's doing Thanksgiving. Invites everybody. You come there, the bishop is saying that he's praying to God, that he continue blessing him so he can build more. The people are there drinking and singing when they know what to do, call police. This man had just stolen their money. So we celebrate criminality. We celebrate criminality, bad behavior. The only way I could have come in here and it makes me, I would have come with police and all over the place, pushing people up and down. That is madness. And nobody says anything. Nobody have ever asked anybody in Nigeria, what does he do for a living? We are people without daytime job, living like stans and have been celebrated. Even coming to university and earning money, our universities are giving the one hundred and thirty degree. That is a crisis we have. That must change. Universities must give doctorate degree to renowned professors of research who have developed something, not this. We have a country where professors are paid four hundred thousand, we are councilors and more than a professor. Which country is that? Where we negotiate with bandits, but we can't negotiate with professors. What country is that? We would destroy it. We would deal, we must change this country. So Prof, we can sustain it. We will sustain, we, the people, will sustain it. We will say no when the new person comes and say, hey, say, Oga, Oga, Oga. Don't stop this one. Let me tell you, as governor, just to conclude, I used to go to church. And I said to them, if the governor come late, you stay at the back. That's where let's come and stay, not in front. Because I was doing it as a governor, when I left, one local government chairman came one day, wanted to go front. They told him, Peter, you should stay at the back. Go to the back. It is the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Excellency. Now we shall take questions from the students. I'm going to select one here, one, 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 one. One. None. Okay. Okay, please, okay, answer the question.
Thank you very much, sir. My name is Olubade Tovilus Toluwache. I am from, I'm from Department of History and Diplomatic Studies. Yes, sir. Sir, I want to ask, you have talked so much on the economic problem of this country. How do we channel the intellectual of young people in this country to attract a prosperity, prosperity in our economy? Talking about, for instance, like the polytechnic education, how can we revive it? How is it possible that people can go to school to study furniture and they will make it? How can we go to school that people will study iron bending or what do you call it? And people can make it? You don't have to always come to be a lawyer or you be a, people can actually make it from everything they have to do. And, and, and sir, the next thing sir I want to ask is that, sir, I was at home for eight months. It, it impaired all my education and I am not growing any younger. Sir, how do you, how will you ensure to make sure that this incident I should strike stops for life? Sir, 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 the last thing I want to say, the last thing I have to say.
Hello.
Great Nigerian students. I want to please, I beg you, go and get your PVC.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Good morning, Your Excellency. Agreed, Nigerian students?
My name is Laurence Chidebe Rehobo. I'm a foreign level of political science and international relations. Your Excellency, I have a question for you. I am a frustrated Nigeria. What would be our faith? What our faith after our duration in school? And that was securing a good job. Because over the years, I've got good, that be lamenting on you today that I'm not getting a job. Someone who did not go to, for them, that is why they believe that school is bought as a scam. So what assurance are you giving to us? After what's questioned, we, the foreign level student, by April this month, by April this year, we'll be out of school. And after NYC, what will be the assurance that you are going to get a white collar job? Thank you, Excellency.
Yes, you do, President.
All the greatest Nigerian students, ever courageous Nigerian students, I want to talk. I want to yell. I want to sorrow. I want to distinguish, acknowledge my vice chancellor. Thank you very much. I want to distinguish, acknowledge my vice chancellor, Professor Nala. I want to acknowledge the man of Cali by himself. You know that person that, His Excellency, Peter Gregory Obi. It is a great opportunity. According to your manifesto, sir, the Ministry of Education will work out on a public-private model that involves private corporation as you funding and managerial responsibilities in a special restructured taxation plan. Sir, how do you, can you give us proper plan and strategies on how you want to implement this? Then my second question is, our school is in session, how do you collaborate with students in order for us to organize and go and collect our PVCs in the local areas? So basically, that's the only, that's the only two questions I have. Thank you very much.
Please, we want to have a lady now.
Hello, sir. All right, my name is Yunis Attathorba. All right, my question is, Ghana has seen a large financial increase in their country since implementing a citizen by investment program, allowing Africans in the diaspora to become automatic citizens. For example, a person with an African DNA can invest a certain amount of money in the country. All right, for example, a person with an African DNA can invest a certain amount of money in the country through business, through donations and through real estate ventures to be granted citizen status in the country. Do you think that type of program will benefit Nigeria? And if so, how will you go about putting it into place?
Thank you. That lady, that lady there.
Good morning, good morning, Your Excellency. My name is Ugo K. Maybel. I'm from the Department of College of Health Science, Medicine and Surgery. Sir, to be honest, most of us in my department, the only thing in our head is to jabba. So what's the assurance that after going through this whole stress of medical school, that I'll not graduate and then they'll be paying me seventy K under very bad working condition? Apart from that, doctors are under so much risks. You're a doctor and then something happens to a patient and then the patient's relative will come and attack you for doing your job as a doctor. So what's the assurance that, because the brain drain in the medical sector is really, really high. So what are you going to do about the doctors running away from the country? Thank you.
All right. Hello, 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 please, yeah.
Sir, just one, please, please. Hello. Of the greatest Nigerian students, ever courageous Nigerian students, I want to- My name, my name is Ugo Chukuramez. I'm a foreign relevant- So with the few things our Excellency has- I just asked, I just had some few questions I would like to ask. First of all, I want to ask His Excellency, how is going to deal with the security issues all over the country? We can't sleep or travel at night. There's no peace anywhere anymore. My second question goes to, what is his plan for the youth? Are we just going to be obedient and not see any significant change in our welfare and job security? Because lot of us are out of, are out of school and there's no job for us. I also want to ask, I also want to ask His Excellency in his thoughts in improving our GDP. That's my question.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is he Excellency? And by grace of God Almighty, the president of this great nation come May twenty twenty, twenty-three. There is-
Your Excellency, my name is Professor Arinse Aboa. Immediat past in Faculty of Law and now Director, Centre for Security and Legal Studies of the University. I'm adjutant after listening to one of the presidential candidates at a rally where he made an allegation that the current fullest curse we are having in Nigeria, the change of color of the currency, we are all directed at sabotaging the forthcoming election. My question is, do you align yourself with these lamentations expressed by this candidate? If you, if no, dialogue how you see this policy of changing currency at this hour? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please, the last question here, you, please. That lady, yeah. We have to be gender balanced.
Good morning, my Excellency. It's a great honor to be in front of you today and you are welcome. My name is Anne Questa. I'm a hundred level student of post-science and international relation. My question is on insecurity. Three officers, um, preliminary officer, official were killed in the attack in Imo State, which I know you heard about it. Every one of us heard about it. On a convoker in the former governor, former governor Ikedi or Hakim. What is your plan or what are your plans in tackling- What is your plan or what are your plans in tackling insecurity issues? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for all the questions. Uh, may I invite the Vice Chancellor? Hold on, let me invite the Vice Chancellor, please, to make a presentation to His Excellency before he continues to respond to your questions. If we have the chance, we may take more, please.
Great Nigerian students. The University of Abuja has a tradition. And the tradition is to show gratitude to our guests and assure them that we welcome them to our great campus and we are grateful for taking their time to come. We don't have money, but we can give a token and therefore I'm giving this token to Peter Obi. Ever of the Nigeria students. Please, let's listen to our next president. Let's listen to our next president, please.
Let me, let me play with all of us. Let me play with all of us. There's something. There's something the Vice Chancellor begged all of us this morning. My dear students, there's something the Vice Chancellor begged all of us this morning. What we are doing here, as the VC requested this morning, is very, very important. That's why you select and vote for leaders everywhere in the world. You are not, we are not here for rally. We're here for intellectual discussion, which I want to play with all of you, to please, please participate. Let us organize ourselves and participate and you'll see the difference in the end. Now, I'm going to answer the questions that were asked by students, very, very important question. The first question is about issue of how do we transform it? That somebody who read. Cabin tree. Cabin tree furniture can be rich. Get job. Let me assure you, my brother. Teaching education is very important. But once you have basic education, once you have basic education, you can actually change the world. So that skill you are talking is in you. You don't need to look for a job. It goes with the same person who said they are looking for a job. What we want to do in the country is to make you job creators, employers of labor. I can tell you, most big companies you see in the world. Most big companies you see in the world, we are started by people like you. We want to create the opportunity for you to create job. What is the biggest company in the world? Huh? Can anybody tell me what is the biggest company in the world? Huh? Apple. Who is the founder of Apple? Huh? And who? He's not the only person. Let me tell you. The founder of Apple. Hello? The founder of Apple is Steve Jobs. You're right. Steve Jobs and his friend was Nick founded a company called Apple. Steve Jobs, if you don't know, was adopted from a home, like motherless baby's home. His mother had him and couldn't take care of him and put him in a foster home. And he didn't have opportunity of going to university. He had basic education. And like any other child, him and his friend was Nick. In fact, he was so stubborn in second school, they didn't believe you. They developed the biggest company in the world today. Apple is valued for over two point four trillion, when the entire African GDP is about two point two trillion. So it is a different thing. You can, you are a job creator. The highest number, the best school you can go in India today. The school that created millions of, created the most number of billionaires in, or the most number of people who have celebrated millionaires in India is Bombay Institute of Technology. That school was built the same year by British government as Yaba College of Technology. It is just that Nigeria failed. And we are not getting it right. When we had COVID, we were looking for what, where? Where to produce what? Huh? Nigeria had a vaccine factory, Yaba. Where we are using things to fight. Other of us, other problems. But we killed it. So education, technical school actually better than academic school. Tell all in. Furniture making, crafting, who are the biggest furniture making makers in the world? They have more money than professors. So we want you to focus on skill that can give you opportunity. I can go on and on, but we have so many questions. What do you do in terms of ASU strike? That means you are not be following my campaigns. Let me assure you today and in assuring you this, nobody will be in position of telling you what I'm telling you today. The first presidential candidate of labor owns two universities. As you know, Daddy Baba Ahmed owns two universities. I know what I tell him every day. The only way university can, public university can be closed is that your own is closed. Four years will be four years. There will not be ASU strike under my watch. People will say, listen very carefully, people will say it's impossible. People who say it's impossible. Let me tell you, as Governor of Annambra State, I had ASU strike. As Governor of Annambra State, I had ASU strike. I sat down with ASU, with the university management. Discuss what we are going to do in order to end ASU strike. In your last eight months' strike, Annambra State University was one of them. Go and check and they will tell you, go and listen to the, what the SUG president said. He said they were not on strike because of Peter Obi's decision in two thousand and nine. Schools cannot be closed. If they are closed, Nigeria is closed. Because that's where we are trading the future. And now, please, if somebody asks that I said that how are we going to manage schools? Teaching education. The way we are managing in Nigeria is not the way it should be done. We have what you call that fund. Is money derived from corporations. We will ensure that it's better managed. We will ensure that we increase more funding and we will do so many method, including loans to sustain university. University education must change. I'm sure when I say loans to sustain university education, some of you will say, oh no, we don't want to loan. Let me tell you the beauty of loan. If you bother to go to school, you only pay it when you have a job. If you don't have job, you don't pay it. So with that, we will change the funding of the university. How do we guarantee securing job? I've said before, you will be job creators. That's what you people are supposed to be. I went to university in Nigeria. Yeah, one example is that there's no physical support to micro, small businesses where you're domiciled. If we support you, you're energetic, you're creative, you will be creating jobs. And then those, because we are going to move the country from consumption to production, there will be opportunities for job creation in different fields. And that's what we are going to do. In African DNA. Let me assure you. We already, it was, it's already been done in America, where some people say they are from Nigeria. And Nigerian government is already giving them opportunities to be citizen. Somebody asked about brain drain. Let me tell you, I'm not worried about brain drain. Brain drain will be brain game. Those that changed India today, those that changed China today, those that changed all those countries are people who left at time of difficulty. When these are good, they will all come back with what they have learned from there. I'm not worried about those who are leaving Nigeria. Quote me, when we do what we do here, they'll come back. Are people who are stay. They will bring the foreign investors. So don't worry about them. If doctors leave and we train more doctors, we'll give them job here. If we do the right thing, people want to come back here. If we do the right thing, people want to come back here. I've lived abroad myself and I know that people want to come back here. But they cannot come back. Nobody knowingly goes where there's anarchy. Even animal. If ants are passing here, you put fire there, they'll turn away. So nobody goes where there's a problem. Nobody will come back here. So those who want to leave, I don't blame you. If you have where you live, but we'll make it such a way that you come back. Prof, you asked about, you asked about food shortage. And currency this. One is that the Central Bank of Nigeria have rights to change the currency. It's within their law. They obey the law. Number two. Those who said they are doing it for, for election, they are in better position to know. I don't make comment about other candidates. Especially candidates who are established, they know because they're inside. Me, I'm outside. I don't know whether the hunger that imposing on us is also imposed election. I don't know what the poverty they are creating is also because of election. They know better. I don't know. What I want to tell you is that under my watch, we will not have first casting. Under my watch, we have things work. And for what they do, they are in position to know better because they are part of that. I've said it before, we need to just have people who can explain to us and everything I communicates. We can no longer have an issue where people say, oh, because they changed currency, let people vote whoever they want to vote. Let them do whatever, whatever they want to do. I'm not in position to know. You might be part of them, so you tell me, because I'm not, I don't know what. Mine, Prof, mine is obey the law. You're a lawyer? Okay. And I think. Somebody tells about what I have for the youth. Let me assure you, the youth are the future. The government we want to run. Every day they tell you are leaders of tomorrow. They were telling me this when I was in university, that we are leaders of tomorrow, till today, till today, they don't want to go. And we are, we want to force them to go. One of the things I said, go and look at the four major candidates and the youngest. In fact, to tell you what it is, if you look at the two major parties. Call it three major candidates. Among the three major candidates, I'm the youngest. Each of them, each of them are my senior who are at least fifteen years. Yes, 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 right? If you do an average age, because we are going to use an average age. If you do an average age, an average age between the chairman of the party of say PDP. The chairman of the party. The candidate and the vice presidential candidate, the average is seventy. That is the average. The average is seventy. If you do. If you do. If you do the one of APC. The one of APC. The chairman, the chairman is seventy-five that I know. The candidate is unknown. One minute, one minute, one minute. The other one, so if you do the average on APC, I assure you, it won't be less than seventy. Just imagine whatever you've done. It's okay. If you do the average between myself, the vice presidential candidate, our party chairman. Our average is about fifty-five. What it does shows that the next government will come lower to fifty. One day it will get to you. Where these people are, if I. We would allow that to get there. These are things we want to change. So when they come, you must be younger. Our party chairman is fifty-two years old. When that of APC is seventy-five, PDP is seventy-one, I was in fifty-two. That's how you start leading a party, so you can give younger people a chance. But these people won't be taken by people of their own age. No, no, no. You're a human being. You get tired. That's why they have retirement time. Let me assure you, we have finished. I've answered all the questions. And I know today you have school and it's important to you. So I think at this stage, maybe we will stop here. No lectures today? Okay, we'll take only two more questions and we'll stop.
Great Nigeria students! Articulate Nigeria students! Sorry! Great Nigeria students! No more articulate. Thank you very much. Please, I want to ask a very straightforward question. Very straightforward question. Is affecting everybody in Nigeria? Those who have been recruited to protect us, to police us, to guide us, to direct us, to assist us, have become our nemesis. As I was coming here this morning, I saw two policemen dragging down a young man from a taxi because he was wearing, to them, they say he's a yahou yahou boy. I said, "Show me evidence." They couldn't, and I said, "If you don't leave him now that I'm here, you and your crew will run away from here this moment." Because that was in front of school. So, Your Excellency, the Nigerian police, most of them, not all of them, their activities, especially those on the road, especially those on the highway, especially those who harass people. Your Excellency, we need help. I don't know what we are going to do to Nigerian police. Sometimes I wonder, are we going to remove all of them and chase them away? Or are we going to retrain them? Nigerian police needs to be declared as a state of emergency. Because the kind of police that we have now, and their actions and inactions, Your Excellency, if nothing is done and you become the president of this country by God's grace, they can be a source of failure. So, Mr. President, Mr. Excellency, I don't know the assurance you are going to give us and what will happen to the Nigerian police. Thank you very much. Please, this is the last question, please, please.
My name is Honorable Campbell. Now, in 2020, the federal government banned cryptocurrency trading. And 80% of our digital revenue as young people is online. So what will you do deliberately to ensure that the cryptocurrency and the digital space have the federal government backing in your tenure? Thank you.
Great Nigerian students! Um, okay. Because my name is Patience Kajen Didiyama Camp in the department of, I'm a federal level student of computer science. Uh, my question is about people that had their PVCs in other states and are currently in school. And they are going to find it difficult to vote. I have roommates, friends that are registered in where the state where they live, but they are currently in school. And it's going to be difficult for them to travel, to go and vote. And some schools are fixing exams close to the election day. So is there any way we can mobilize, maybe, uh, is there any way we can mobilize students to go to their various states to vote for the upcoming election? I'm sure I'm sure, I'm sure about 4 million students.
We have, we have come to the, we are supposed to stop by 10, but because of the way people are, most of the questions are the same thing. So we'll just have to stop, you know? We have heard two men, "No, no, no." What is different in it?
Your Excellency, my question is different. And I believe it's something very good. We are praying that P2B will but P2B will not be in El Ustis. P2B will not be in Adamawan. P2B will not be in Lagos. P2B will not be in Baojia. Now, there's something called state capture. You struggle to get the power from nowhere, command hijackings. What precisely are you talking here is about what South Africans are on state capture? What is your strategy to ensure that? By the time this Nigeria suffered, see you as the hope, justice, fairness and order that this mandate enters the hand of P2B. What is the chance that from nowhere, people will enter Labour Party and P2B will begin to find some challenges in managing these human beings? Thank you.
Okay, let's attempt to answer this. Let's attempt to answer this. And I'll start from you. Let me start from you. Let me tell you, I've been a governor. As a governor of my state, I did not have one member in House of Assembly from my party. I did not have a local government chairman. I did not have House of Red Member or Senate Member. My party was as small as label. You only worry about all this when you're going to run a transactional government. If you're going to be transparent, it doesn't matter whether you alone. And if you know me, I don't think they'll come from anywhere. What we are going to do, have no room for anybody coming for any capture. We will capture the person before he captures us. We don't have any room. I have two questions here which I'll answer. Somebody asked about corruption and theft. But when I finish this, I'll use them to conclude. Here, people ask about issue of Nigerian police. Let me assure you. Let me assure you, Nigerian police is not the problem. We will change Nigerian police to be police and they will be friendly. Because they don't know. Those boys who are calling yahou yahou boys because of lack of our investments, no, no job. We will make those people who call yahou yahou boys. We will change them because they have the talent to change the world. Let me tell you. One minute, I want you to listen to this. Hello? I want you to listen to this. When we talked about, when we talked about Steve Jobs this morning, all of you said Steve Jobs founded Apple. Everybody here says Steve Jobs founded Apple. Let me tell you one of the greatest problems of Steve Jobs. The greatest thing that Steve Jobs did in his life. Steve Jobs founded Apple with his friend. I want you to listen to this. What's next? Do you know what they did? Steve Jobs went and started using phone to test a man called John Sculley. John Sculley was CEO of Pepsi. Pepsi have a headquarters in New York. His office is in 12th floor. Pepsi Global. The CEO of Pepsi is a man called John Sculley. Steve Jobs and his friend sat in a garage, texting him every day, "Stop selling sugared water. Come and join us to change the world." These two boys are in a garage, texting him every day, "Stop selling sugared water." Because that is not the future of the world. What we are doing is future. And they were doing it every day, every day. I want you to listen. If it's in this country, do you know what will happen? Police will arrest them. One minute, after I took the man. After six months of testing John Sculley every day, John Sculley went to Pepsi management and submitted his resignation. I said, this boy said to him, "We are not going to pay you. We are going to give you 5% of the company, no salary." But wanted to help us to change the world. John Sculley went to Pepsi management, submitted his letter of resignation. And when they asked him where is he going? He said he wants to go and join these boys in garage because they are fascinated by what they are doing. That's how John Sculley left his office to come to Apple to become the CEO of Apple. No salary, but he was given 5% of the company. The first thing John Sculley did was to sack Steve Jobs. You know Steve Jobs was sacked from Apple? John Sculley sacked him. He said Steve Jobs, Steve Jobs is fascinated about what he's going to do. He's not putting money inside of it. So imagine selling sugar. When he said he's going to resign, everybody said he has, he needs a satisfactory treatment. But that's how John Sculley became 5% owner of Apple. Nobody would do it here. They will say the police will arrest everybody. Bill Gates left school in Harvard where his parents went and went to live in a, in a bank with his friend to start Microsoft. The parents nearly disowned him because they didn't know what he was doing. But a woman who was there doing cleaning had him as a mother, as a child, looking after him. That woman was eventually given a tiny, is a cleaner, giving a tiny percent of Microsoft, which eventually turned into a billionaire. So it's so fascinating. All these yahou yahou boys, all they need is a direction and they will change the world. And women, they change the world. Today they are frustrated. I'm not saying, there might be some of them who are criminals. But I lived when India was doing that. And we thought India was doing it. Today, India is ICT owner in Nigeria. We will change it. Those who carry laptop will give them more laptop. Cryptocurrency, I'm studying cryptocurrency. I assure you, it's something we need to study very well. We do whatever we are going to do. We are going to do it where we study, learn. The last time I met the cryptocurrency management, I told them, I said, "I'm going to learn what you're doing. It's fascinating." But I want to learn it. That is, I can't say, tell you, I'm going to put money in it. I'm not going to tell you we're going to do it, but we will do what, remember? We said we are going to move Nigeria to fought industrial revolution. We're not going to stay outside it. Daddy is a young man. I have an idea what they are doing and we're going to drive it. Vodas card will ask people to go and we will talk to universities. They have to allow you to go and vote. Your vote is more critical than those people that give money. Because you know the right and wrong thing. So we must allow you to vote and we will plead with them. And there was two other question which they wrote here. Someone wrote about security. I've said extensive what we are going to do in security. I've said security, we will not have unsecured Nigeria under our watch. The other two important questions people ask here is corruption and issue of our debts. Corruption and our debts. And I can tell you, borrowing, never think that borrowing is a problem. Every country of the world is owing money. Every country that develops is by borrowing. Every good business borrows money. The G7 countries are in debts. The number one biggest economy in the world is America. As we speak, American debt is almost 90% of her GDP. American debt is almost 90% of her GDP. So there's nothing wrong in borrowing. Number one biggest economy is China. China owns over 50% of its economy in debt. Nothing wrong in borrowing. Number three country is Japan. Japan debt to GDP is 230%. So Japan is owing 230% of Japan's debt. Singapore is 120. I can go on and on and tell you what countries owe. What is wrong is what you use the money you borrowed for. If you borrow it and invest, you will grow. If you borrow it and throw it away, you will collapse. The problem Nigeria has is that they borrowed the money and nobody know where the money borrowed is. So I dropped it. And I give you an example. If you go to the China, like I said, Japan, being the third biggest economy, is owing 230% of its GDP. Everybody knew where that Japan used that money for. And above all, Japan today is the highest owner of US treasuries. So they will have savings. If you push them, they can pay some. But I give you an example using two countries, two developing countries of what a debt can do. In 2010, in 2010, Nigeria debt, Nigeria in 2010, the total debt of Nigeria is about 10 billion dollars in 2010. A little bit more, it could be. It's about that. I'm not precise what the quantity is. Our GDP then, our GDP then as a country, in fact, if you put the local domestic debt and external debt, it could be more, it could be about two or three times that. Our per capita, which is real measure of wealth in 2010 is about $2,500. Another country, Bangladesh, as at that time was owing about 40 billion dollars. And their per capita was $747 in 2010. In 2021, Nigerian debt by end of last year, 2022, let me go for 2020. Nigerian debt has now increased where I've told you, if you add words and means, where debt is now 77 trillion, which is 187 billion dollars. So our debt has grown by about maybe 600 times. maybe six hundred times, because cumulatively domestic and foreign, we were about thirty then. Because I usually listen, we are about thirty, now we are one eighty-something. But our per capita is now two thousand. So we borrowed more money and our per capita went down. Bangladesh have moved from debt of forty-seven billion, forty-seven billion dollars, today to about hundred and fifteen billion. Their per capita is now two thousand five hundred and something. So their per capita have tripled. Their GDP have tripled, Nigerian own strength. That means that the money you borrowed, like you people said, snake chopped it. So we are going to look for that snake. Luckily for us, yes, we're going to look for the snake and be able to know whether you can commit some. We're not going to take everything. So that's what we are going to do. I assure you, then finally was corruption. Daddy was the only House National Assembly member. And the only senator who did not buy his house, where federal government sold house to senators. Daddy did not buy his own. I have challenged everybody since I started this journey. Go and show me where, where Annambras state money is missing. Did I hand it over as governor? It's important, and you listen. Did I hand it over as governor? I was not owing pension. I was not owing gratitude. Whatever we were in pension and gratitude before I came, that something billion, I cleared it off. I was not owing salary. I was not owing any contractor, go and look for any contractor. I was not owing for any contractor who have worked or delivered what we asked him to do. Whether in supply or construction, I wasn't owing one person. And no contractor will ever said, he sat down with people to discuss what people will give him. We were not doing that, and above all, I left in three banks in Nigeria for the Annambras state government. Assets Bank of Nigeria, I had in pass a balance for Annambras state government, fifty million dollars over ten billion naira. I had for Indiamon Bank, fifty million dollars over ten billion naira. In Fidelity Bank, fifty million dollars over ten billion naira. I left when I left office, seventy something billion naira. I did not borrow one naira from anybody. I did not go to anywhere to ask for borrowing. And above all, till today, you can go and verify, no, till today, no state, no state have any governor left that don't have governor's benefits. Every governor who have left office today is being paid one fee or the other. When they brought it to me, my speaker had a very generous gift, a very generous pension for me, and he brought it for me to sign. And I said, Madam Speaker, I have sent the people of Annambras state, by his grace. I'm going home, Annambras has never bought me a bottle of water since I left nine years ago. So I will fight corruption. I assure you that we will fight corruption. We will stop it. If you are not stealing, the worst corruption is nepotism. If you are not doing that, putting people who are not qualified in office, if you are not passing for patriotism, you are not doing the wrong thing. If you, which I know me and Daddy are not, are not involved, your wives and children are not involved, those around you are not involved, you're only by fifty percent. And I assure you, we will deal with corruption. Just believe us, support us, vote for us, any Nigeria as possible.
Thank you, thank you, Your Excellency, thank you, Excellency. Ah, may I recognize the presence of the Deputy Vice Chancellor Administration, Professor Sadiq Abakar Abba in our midst. Ah, while they shake hands with His Excellency, I will invite the Dean of the Faculty of Social Sciences for his vote of tanks before we take the national anthem. After the national anthem, we please get seated before His Excellency exit the venue. Thank you.
Ah, thank you, Moderator. We thank you, the Labour Party Presidential Candidate. We know we give you time, you will talk beyond today. But we say we thank you for everything you have done, and we are believing by the grace of God, May twenty, I mean May twenty twenty-three, on twenty-nine you will be sworn in as the President of Nigeria. Let it be so. Ah, we thank everybody, we thank you students for coming. We thank our media men, we thank the visitors. I wish everybody safe journey as you go back. And we wish our Presidential Candidate good luck in his campaign to become the President of Nigeria. Thank you.